Oh, yeah, feels good.
All right, Mayor, I've got 6:45 if you're ready to start the work session.
All right. Go ahead and begin our council work session.
Okay, thank you. And as a reminder, we are recording the meeting and it is being live broadcast for the audio. So both for these microphones and for the public microphone. So we'll start with the consent agenda. And so we've got 11 items on consent agenda tonight. The first three are minutes from previous meetings. You've got the regular meeting minutes from January the 7th, first item. Then we had a special meeting on January the 14th. So those minutes are item two. Then item three are not included in your packet but have been passed out on the blue sheet of paper. Those are the minutes from the closed session that we had at the end of the January 14th special meeting. So please take a moment and review these and then when we're finished with them, pass them down to the city attorney, believe, and we'll collect those from you. The fourth item on the consent agenda is what we do every year for the last several years, approval of a financial audit agreement with Martin Starnes for the audit of the current fiscal year that they came and did a presentation last month for the year that we ended, June 30th of 18. So this is for the current year's audit and that work will be starting soon, believe it or not. And that is, I believe, about $52,000 and that's split, of course, between the city and the tourism authority for that funding, primarily from the city. Item five is a follow-up from an action that you took at the last January meeting to accept a contract and proposal from W.R. Martin for the operational efficiency consulting services. You accepted the committee's recommendation in January and so authorized me to negotiate a contract with them. I'm pleased to let you know that it came in under what I'd budgeted for the work. So that's a $36,500 contract. That work is scheduled to end by the end of June of this year.
Yeah.
So that'll all be done in this current fiscal year. Item six is an item that came to, or is coming to you from the Public Safety Committee that met, I think, on the 14th of January. And that is to amend our position, the technical action is to amend the position classification to add a second police captain position. We have a captain's position that is over the admin section of the police department. This would be a captain that would mirror on the patrol side. And so the information is available on that position. Item seven is something that we've done for most of the last 10 years. It is a resolution for alcohol sales and possession and consumption associated with the Friday Night Live concert series and the July 4th Red, White &amp; Belmont celebration. And we will certainly get you more information about that concert series. As of now, the DBDA Downtown Belmont Development Association is planning five concerts, one on May 10th, May 24th, June 7th, June 21st, and then on July 4th itself for Friday Night Live. So this action is to shut the streets down and then to allow for sales, possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages associated with that concert series. Items eight and nine are two special events that we've had for several years in town. Staff has worked with the organizers of these events and recommend approval of them. The first one, item eight, is from the House of Mercy for their annual Walk for AIDS, which will close, I believe, one lane of Main Street on April the 6th. Item nine will be the 15th year that we've done this and it is closing lanes on multiple downtown streets for the Belmont Classic 5K walk and run. And that's part of the Belmont Citizens Police Academy fundraiser for them. Item 10 is a new item, but it is a request that's coming to us from our planning and zoning department. And now that we've got Reflection Point and particularly the McLean Development have a lot of waterfront properties, we're getting more requests for flood development permits, specifically for docks, but also as we do have more waterfront development, we do have more floodplain permits. And we are, we have requested that Gaston County help us with our floodplain management program. We're led to have an, in our local agreement with Gaston County and have the Gaston County planning departments floodplain management staff handle all of our floodplain permits so that we don't have to do that. Step one in that process is for you to authorize me to write a letter to the county manager asking them to explore in our local agreement. And then we'll work out the details between both boards. But that would allow our residents who live on waterfront properties to get service from Gaston County without us having to go through all the expense of keeping up with the training and the rules because it can be very technical. And Gaston County has the capacity to handle this for us. The final item on the consent agenda is a travel and expense policy. And apparently we had one of these in the early 1990s, but we've not really updated it since. We frankly can't find a copy of that one. And so we wanted to provide a new travel and expense policy. We've had forms in place and practices in place for many years that we've been following, but this is the policy that codifies everything. And then it actually indexes the per diem and everything like that to the IRS rates, which we have not been doing since I've been here. So it is an updated policy that our finance director, Michelle Wood, has worked on. And it's based on travel and expense policies from other towns in our area. So those are all the items on the consent agenda. If you have any questions about them, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have one about the audit for travel and tourism. Did you say we're splitting the cost of the audit?
Yes, ma'am. So we cost allocate. It's a small portion of it that's actually for the travel and tourism. But they do audit the city's books as well as travel and tourism's.
Okay, but the travel and tourism is paying for their part.
For their, just for their part, right.
All right, thanks.
Hey, you're not just had one question for clarification, so I know what I'm voting on. Under definitions authorized in individual, remind me of the citizens, or the city's organizational chart, it says department heads and city managers.
Are you on the travel policy?
Yeah. It's under section two definition.
Yes, sir.
The first one where it says department head and city managers' travels requires approval by the immediate supervisor as outlined in the city's organizational chart.
Yes, sir.
So remind me what that, what that is.
So I sign off on any travel from the department heads take, since I'm their immediate supervisor.
I understand that.
And then they, of course, sign off on travel from their staff. The way our organizational chart works is I work for you, so the mayor technically would need to sign off on any travel and expense forms that I would have.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to be sure I understood. Then one other question, I just asked this for, and I'm sure you reviewed everything on here. The section on telephone calls, you think that's an important section?
I noticed that because we don't normally have a lot of long-distance phone calls anymore with everybody having cell phones.
That doesn't seem relevant to me anymore.
But there are, I mean, there are some of our staff that do not have a city cellphone. So in that case, if they were to call, make a personal call on their phone, we could reimburse them if they had long distance, depending on their coverage. Or if they didn't have a cellphone at all and they made a call from their hotel saying, you know, calling home and saying, "I made it," then we would reimburse them for that expense. I don't know that we frankly would use it very often, but it's there just in case.
Okay.
I know I'd get in trouble if I don't call home right away, but I use my city cellphone to let them know, right?
Yeah, that's right. All right. Buddy, you have anything else?
Just one question on the patrol captain request. I was late coming to the safety meeting, so I didn't get to hear the whole presentation, just sort of a snippet on it. Is council, I mean, satisfied that that's a necessary position?
Yes, so the Public Safety Committee, which consists of three council members unanimously recommended that.
Yeah, it's not adding a head or anything, it's just reclassifying them position to, kind of for parity.
Chief Hawkins is here if you have any questions.
Okay, so it's not adding any, it's sort of a lateral type move.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, it's just for parity of positions and responsibilities. It's...
Okay.
It's a good move.
Okay. All right. You want to go ahead and proceed on to the meeting?
Yes, sir, so that's all that I have for the consent agenda. So the city clerk will get the sign-in sheets and then we can begin the regular meeting.
If we're done by 8 o'clock, yeah. Do you need a charger? That's all right. I have a charger, just can't reach the...
I got a six-foot at my house. It's pretty massive. Yeah, why don't you put USB and power shit underneath these?
All right. Approved. We're ready to go ahead and proceed. We'll call a meeting to order. And I'd like to ask Jim Pepperdine to say the invocation and Judy Claussen to do the pledge of allegiance for us.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings bestowed on us here in Belmont and we ask that you continue to provide grace and wisdom to the mayor, city manager, council, staff, and all who have come here to transact business before the council today. Thank you again for the blessings and for your continued guidance as we move forward in 2019. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. In the great law of the Constitution, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second? Who made the motion?
Richard.
Okay, Walter Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proceed on to the regular agenda then, okay? Got several signed up for public comment here. Good news, these folks. The first one we'll call on is Vince Hill. Vince, state your name and address. Delta, you can come up too if you want to.
Good afternoon. It's a bit hot in here, too.
City cutbacks.
To be a fan of the...
We don't have money for any of this labor.
Who's got money for me, guys? Honorable mayor, city council members, Adrian Parks, and Mr. and Mrs. Public. My name is Vince Hill and I'm the vice chair for an organization called Elements of Empowerment, previously known as the Juneteenth Committee. Problem with that was we didn't have but one opportunity a year to do something toward a cultural combination here in Belmont. So we created a 501 in order to expand our program. And with the generous contribution that the city has provided for us, along with other contributors, we've been able to, for example, and let me pass these out so you can read that, we've been able to create a reading program that we've established a relationship with the libraries here in Belmont, Gaston County, all of Gaston County. We've also been able to, and put this on your calendar if you like jazz, on the 17th of this month, we have been working with the Abbey to perform a jazz concert in the Hay Theater. And it's become very successful. We also have a herd lock exhibition that's being, that's at the Main Library in Gaston. Everybody needs to go and see that. It's a very, very good, interesting exhibit, especially now that this is Black History Month and the situations that this United States is finding itself in. So go see that. We have plans for other programs in the very near future and that will be announced as we come up with.
Yeah, that's good. Seventeenth of February, what day is that?
That's a Sunday afternoon.
Sunday afternoon.
Yeah, right after you get out of church, you can come around and... But anyway, that tells everyone what we are doing with the monies that you have been giving us and expanding and doing greater things for the city of Belmont. Delta, you have anything to say?
I don't. He has said everything so eloquently and I just want to thank the city of Belmont for the investment that you have made in Elements of Empowerment and the Belmont Juneteenth Celebration and just for the general support of Belmont and the community that's helping our programs that we have developed to thrive.
Thank you. We're not having a Pilateas Muck out there, are we?
Well, that's, I don't know if we ever get that. If they do, I won't be there. But anyway, if anyone has any questions for us, now's the time.
What types of programs are you looking at developing? I mean, I know what the Juneteenth is, but you said you're looking at other ones. What types of things are there?
Well, the ones that we have instituted up to this point has been the reading program for young people at our libraries. And along with that, the exhibition there at the Main Library. And we also have the jazz program that we're doing, and those are the things that I just mentioned. And like I said, we have other endeavors that we're trying to attend to, but it's in the premature stage right now, so it's kind of hard to elaborate on it right now. But you'd be the first, you know?
We are definitely in the responsible growth process. Everything that we've been able to do, we've been able to grow it and do it well, so we would grow slowly and strongly rather than quickly and put together some things that might not last.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Appreciate all the efforts you've made.
Thanks, thank you, sir.
And that's really good for our community, too.
Yes, it is.
Very good for it. Very good. Thanks, Vince. Appreciate that. Next on the sign-ups here, we have Joe Stowe with the Belmont ABC Board and Bill's here with him, too, so.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to be here on short notice. Just a short update that we have for you guys tonight, we just finished our first year of operations. And we're very pleased and very surprised at the reception we've gotten and the results we've had and where we are today. We appreciate your backing, we appreciate your being here for us and helping us and all this, and we also appreciate your patronage. So things seem to be going very well. But just a few comments about some of the things that we've done. We're required by law to have an audit from an outside accounting firm, so we had a very complete three-week, four-week audit back in June and July. And then the ABC Board decided they want to do an audit, so they came in for a couple of days and went through everything again. And then we got a notice from our banks saying, "We're going to do an audit, too." Point being that we're up to date on ways to handle finances and on laws and on methods and things. We feel we've got a really good understanding of our call system and we're in control of our call system and proud of what we have and where we're going, hopefully. The one thing that we can't predict and we can't do anything is the volume. The volume's completely up to whoever, we can't advertise, as you well know, but we're pleased with where we are so far. Now, having said that, we're profitable. And that requires that we have a distribution. The distribution says that we should distribute one of three or three different ways. One is an alcohol education program. We scoured the county, we scoured Belmont, we've talked to everybody we can talk to. But this is a pretty complicated system and we will support somebody that's really doing something worthwhile. They have to report to us where that money goes, what they're doing with it, and it needs to be done right. We can't find anybody. We've been to the schools, been to the county schools. The Alcohol Board in Raleigh says, they'll send us some names, but the deal is if you guys know somebody or you have somebody, tell us. Let us interview them and let us see what we're going to do there. The other people that are going to get distributions is the city of Belmont and also the police department. So having said that, I'm going to ask Bill Montgomery, our manager, to present the checks tonight and we'll move out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, well, let's see, the first check, and this is our fiscal year 2019 that starts July 1 through December 30th. Is $36,955.28 to the city of Belmont.
That's great.
And then the Belmont Police Department, that one will be $1,810.93.
Wow. Terrific.
Thank you very much.
And I'll add, you guys have done a tremendous job with that board. We've got some good people on that board and...
You've done a great job of pointing people, we appreciate it, we enjoyed it. We meet on the fourth Monday of every month, the fourth Monday of every month, 5:00. We appreciate it, love to have you guys come in anytime. It's an open meeting, it's a public meeting and we have no secrets. So come see us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate all the work you guys have done. Thank you. All right, that leads us to proceed on to the hearing, a public hearing. Do we have a request to go into public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second?
And Mayor, if you recall, for this particular item, we opened the public hearing in January, so we're just, we're still on...
That's right, it's continuation. That's exactly right.
So we'll just continue that public hearing.
Home Two Suites, okay. And I guess Melissa's going to do that, right?
Do we need to vote?
Will, will, good.
Why don't you just pull the record and have a motion?
So, Ron, was your motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue with the public hearing.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll continue then. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight we have the continuation of the public hearing for Home Two Suites. This is zoning amendment request 2018-03. The request is to establish a conditional zoning district on 3.9 acres on the north side of Holly Avenue, just west of Chick-fil-A. The purpose is to construct a 107-room hotel at this property. Relief is needed for any building over 50,000, or not relief, approval is needed for any building over 50,000 square feet. And the applicant is also seeking relief from certain provisions of the Land Development Code. So the subject property is west of Chick-fil-A, located in the Montross Development owned by the Southern Benedictine Society. The applicant is Worn Norman and the parcel IDs are listed in your staff packet. The current zoning is highway commercial and that base zoning will remain if approved. It's surrounded by highway commercially zoned properties and is just south of the exit 27 from 85. Hotels are permitted use in this area, but the applicant does need approval first for a building height of four stories. The Hampton Inn was approved at four stories as well as other apartments, buildings in this area. Second, the applicant is seeking relief to allow parking in the front yard area as is standard with hotels and the front parking and the drop-off and loading area. Third, there's a need for a reduction in the width of the 85 buffer area, which is required at 50 feet in width with a solid opaque buffer consisting of either solid fencing or landscape materials. The applicant proposes reduction in the 50-foot buffer to 25-foot buffer, still with the opaque actual screening in that area. And fourth, the applicant is seeking a relief for the architectural mix of materials. Our Land Development Code does give guidelines for commercial-type buildings and in this particular situation, EFIS is limited to an accent material on walls visible from a public street. Now, I have to refer to my notes as what is EFIS? Well, this is exterior insulation and finish system, but back when it was originally incorporated into mainstream use, had different design challenges that over the years have evolved and is a quality product, you know, installed and used properly. I have before you the breakdown of percentage in the materials. As you can see, it comes in for this particular elevation at 41% of the total materials with brick, glass, and aluminum making up the remaining percentage. So, well, more than an accent material is still less than 50 or 51%, and that's sort of been the standard we've used in other hotel projects. So how does this fit in with our comprehensive land use plan? Well, this is part of the Montross Small Area Plan that envisions mixed use at a higher intensity and higher density in this area for uses that are close to major thoroughfares. This use is, you know, fits right in line with our comp plan vision. And as I mentioned, the comp plan also allows higher buildings with higher stories in this As you look at our goals of our comprehensive land use plan, goal number one would be permitted if this is approved by building a healthy tax base that will provide a choice in services. Goal number two can also be promoted in this approval by fostering a vibrant economy with a diversified tax base that does balance the residential growth with the commercial growth that we would like to see in this area. So the planning board has heard this request and as you can imagine, with the Southern Benedictine Society and a modern hotel, there's been numerous discussions and a lot of times spent by the applicant and staff working to find proposed elevations that could meet approval from the Benedictine Society as well as Hilton. So at the time that the Planning and Zoning Board met, they did have concerns and recommended that applicants go back and keep working on the proposed elevations. That's also why the hearing is continuing tonight. And we have before you included in your staff packets and in this presentation, the approved version by all parties, subject to council approval. So Planning and Zoning Board recommends approval. They did pause on the architectural mix of materials that has now been worked out and presented to council.
Okay.
And they also made the required findings that this request is reasonable and in the public interest and consistent with a comprehensive land use plan. So tonight, we ask you to receive public comment. If you have any questions for staff or here, to render our decision and then make those required findings that are required with all amendments.
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody have any questions for Melissa?
Yeah, Melissa, what's the normal breakdown with regard to the architectural part of it as far as the different materials being used? What do we normally require?
Well, I mean, that's a good question because these have all been considered on a case-by-case basis.
But if there hasn't been relief, there must have been something.
Right, and the previous, for the Hampton Inn, there's maybe a little more flexibility in that they were allowed 51% brick or other materials. In this particular case, the way that the EFIS is proposed, staff felt like it was more than an accent material, but it does come in at less than the 50% that has been used in other discussions for approvals in the city.
The other question I have, and this was before I was on council, but when Mo's and Walmart came forward with their plan, the fake windows on the front are really not particularly aesthetically pleasing. We don't have any fake windows in this situation, do we?
No, no, we've tried to mix it up with a good mix of brick and different materials throughout all four elevations and they're all not fake.
Well, the others are. In other words, I now have the drafting teacher at South Point upset every time he goes to Mo's and Walmart because he hadn't paid attention and now he does. Because it, you know, if you're going to make something look good and stuff, it needs to be that, not try to fake look good. So I'm very concerned about that, so I'm pleased here that that's not what we're looking at.
We understand that, we feel that way as staff as well.
So are the materials consistent with the Lofton Phase 1, Lofton Phase 2, right down the street?
They have similar appearance, they're different materials.
How hidden is it going to be from the people going down Service Road to Walmart and back to...
Well, in that buffer area that we mentioned, it is still required to be an opaque buffer and conditions of approval require protection and preservation of existing trees, any trees that have to be removed for grading. There's different elevation... There's different elevation on that site, for sure.
What's the buffer from the sidewalk in of trees? Or is that all gonna be clear cut?
It remains to be seen as far as what is proposed, but the point about the trees is that an arborist would have to report and sign off on the health of any trees we want to protect and preserve the existing vegetation that's there, as well as require supplemental vegetation to have buffer in that area.
What's the reason to go from 50 feet to 25 feet for the buffer?
Well, these properties are wide, I think that it's about 20, if the 50-foot buffer was required, it's about 20% of the whole lot depth. That's a lot. The Chick-fil-A has 15, like, there's other areas that have 15-foot buffer, so there's precedent of smaller width.
So the uniqueness of this property requires some adjustments in buffers and things like that, because the property is more horizontal than it is vertical? So, the planning staff feels that even the clad system is appropriate? Because it's 28%?
Well, I don't understand, say that again.
The EFIS is 28%.
Oh.
Yeah. So, all right, so the uniqueness of the property requires some things to make it work, and you feel that the things that you have done, and it has been proposed to planning zone is appropriate for the lot?
Yes.
You also feel like that changing the requirement for the clad on the building to the EIFs, that that percentage is appropriate for that building will be architecturally pleasing?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so the site is unique, and it needs for a design and unique for layout?
Yes.
Okay.
Melissa, let me ask you a question on the parking. You know, years ago, there was a big discussion about parking for commercial properties, retail, et cetera, and that we wanted the parking in the rear. If they can have this section dedicated to parking, why couldn't it be in the rear? Or would we put it there so it can go ahead and comply with what we said we wanted? Also, I thought that we were to have a buffer on the street side if there was a front-loading parking lot.
So first, I'll address the front-loading parking. I think they've really maximized their site plan and their ability to have parking and the vehicular ability to access all sides with fire safety equipment. So there's that factor. I think that the location is another factor, that this is on Holly Avenue as opposed to Wilkinson, where we're trying to have a more uniformed look, such as South Fork Station, how they are closer to the street. You know, and then the use itself, I mean, this type of use, and just for safety purposes, I mean, there's multiple factors that have gone into the site plan consideration, but in the give and take, we do require, we do require parking lot screening, and there'll be shrubbery required all the way in the front that meets Chapter 11 requirements. So there's additional plantings that are not shown on the site plan that will come in the next phases of approval, but that's very important to staff, that they have to be, grow up to a height of four feet, and with evergreen plantings in the front. So there'll be a level of buffer present to mitigate the parking.
So, Melissa, the front entrance is gonna be off Holly Avenue?
Yes.
And is the pool in the back?
Yeah, there's, from what I can tell, the, yeah, this is, there's major topography from front to back and also side to side.
Okay.
Melissa, you said something that the screening on the front had yet to be worked out.
No, I mean, they have to comply with our requirements. So, at this time, we have the site plan and the layout of the building, but there's certain construction plan details that would come after approval, and that's an example, is the landscape plan.
What are those requirements on the landscape?
Well, for the parking lot screening, it is evergreen plantings. They have to be a certain height of planting, which is not four feet, but they're to grow to a height of four feet.
What's the minimum? And the reason I bring that out is the coffee shop on Park Street, Starbucks, and this is an issue I brought up with Shelley before, you know, the renderings come in, they look outstanding. The shrubbery is represented, not as it will be put in, but what it will look like in four or five years, which is, you know, to me, I'd rather see a rendering, you know, we're gonna put in one-gallon plants, and this is what it's gonna look like, instead of saying, we're gonna put in four-gallon, five-gallon plants, and you're gonna have a mature plant that meets what we're showing you here. Because when I first drove by that place, I was really surprised to see all these little teeny-tiny plants after I'd seen this beautiful rendering of these shrubs that were gonna provide screening. So, I mean, I don't know if that's a problem or loophole in our code, but, I mean, personally, that bothers me. When you're talking screening, to me, that's day one. I drive by, it's screened, I can't see it, not gradual, as I drive by over a series of years, and we reach here four or five, and I'm like, there, that's it.
I wanna say that the required height is 18 inches for shrubbery, but I'd have to confirm that. It's probably not more than 24 inches for that planting.
But since this is conditional use, we could go ahead and just require that they put in a four-foot shrub from the beginning. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, you know, the city, I'm looking at, you know, we have all of these requirements, which took a long time, the screening, the parking in the rear. We went through all these steps, and had all these meetings, and jumped through all these hoops, yet in conditional use after conditional use, we're sidestepping them. So, I mean, I don't know if they're worth the paper they're written on or not, because we're not really adhering to them. I understand their constraints with different sites, but the city is making a lot of gives here, you know, for parking, for setbacks, for whatever. So, yeah, I agree with Ryan, I mean, maybe we should ask for a take, and ask for, if we're gonna allow all these deviations from the code, you know, what's the clawback for us? And I agree that maybe mature plants would be something that would be reasonable to ask for.
They did the same thing up behind the car wash, they just do small stuff, and I don't know if it's a financial burden to the developers or not, but I can't imagine it's too big of a deal. They look better from day one.
I believe the gentlemen from this group are trying to make a statement as far as the trees and buffers and stuff. Wanna say something?
Sure.
I have a final comment. Just a little one final comment. For the buffer, for example, as staff, we absolutely tried to beef up, if we're asking for a reduction in width, we asked for improved screening in that area. So I understand the concept and definitely agree.
Will people be able to see the hotel from the 85?
Yes.
Four stories.
Yes.
Four stories, okay.
Melissa, last question, the Hampton Inn. You know, where I go in, when I go, we used to go to meetings there, where I enter, the Hampton is not facing North Carolina 7, it's facing another way. So, the parking lot, the orientation of the parking lot, I guess I'm confused in that case. The parking lot is in the side and in the back, I would guess. So when you said there's a historical precedent for that, is that referring to the Hampton itself, or just in general practice?
I think, sorry, the Hampton, they were, the things I was referring to, they were approved at a height of four stories. How they did the architectural mix was at 51% brick. The things that I can also speak to is that Chick-fil-A, like, there's a couple places that we looked at that have the reduced buffer width. So, I did hit on a couple of different locations that have had similar approvals. Parking gets interesting with the private streets and whatnot, so, yeah.
And when people are checking in too, you wanna make sure they have the overhang where they can park if it's raining, or close by, where they can walk their luggage in and stuff like that, too. That's what the design plan is for.
With that, I'll turn that over.
Thank you, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name's Warren Norman, I'm from Rock Hill, and we serve as a developer on the project, but are also owners of the project as well, so we're a third owner with the Abbey and the Kristofen family out of Cattonville. So, had a long relationship with them, new with the Abbey, but along with the Kristofen family, so it's kinda how we were brought in on this, and who we are, and where we're from. Most of our developments are down in the Rock Hill and York County area, so we haven't done a lot of retail or anything up this way, so this is new for us, but certainly would encourage you to look into projects that we have done. Certainly don't wanna stand up and say one thing, and then somehow it look different on the street, you know, once it's there, so we try to pride ourselves in doing what we say, and making sure we're upfront with you guys about what we wanna do and the reasons behind why we're proposing this. This has been a juggle, you know, trying to architecturally meet the guidelines of Hilton, who is the parent company of the Home 2 Suites, which is also the parent company of Hampton Inn, along with the Abbey's guidelines internally, along with what we want the hotel to look like, along with Melissa and her team on what, you know, what the rules are. So it's been a mix of those, and I don't wanna, Hilton has strong opinions and standards that are non-starters. One of those is related to the site plan and the connectivity around the building, so while, we went through multiple different site plan options with not getting into that buffer, and they just wouldn't approve it. There are also fire code issues that were brought up as well, on getting all the way around the building, as it relates to pulling that up on the street, and having a place to put the pool on the back, and some operational issues when the hotel is open and operating, even from parking and distance from spaces to access doors within the hotel that are requirements from Hilton that we just can't get around. So that's why we had to move the building back into the center and have connectivity from all the way around, which is why we ultimately got into that buffer area. On the architectural mix, it's rare to see full-brick hotels, that, those are, we have one in Rock Hill that we did back in 2009, eight, nine, but especially with the Home 2, if you look at the Home 2 Suites, it's a fairly new brand. We did one in Greenville, South Carolina, and it was, I think it was in the 60s, so it was very early on, and even in going through this process, they have certainly modified their standards in terms of what they want the Home 2s to look like, they have a consistent model, and this very much already deviates from where Hilton wants to see the consistency of what they look like. It's more colors, it's more EFIS than what you see here, and so going to them with the brick, in fact, if you look at what we were, when we were up here with you guys last time, we had a lot more architectural arch elements that mirrored the Abbey look and mirrored some of the things that are on the front entrance of the Hampton Inn, and those just didn't get approved. So we were going back and forth with them with how to keep some of those elements, some of those brick elements that is consistent with Belmont and the Abbey, and also meet the requirements that Hilton wants to see in terms of their consistency and their look. And that's where we've ultimately landed. If you go look at most of the Home 2s, they're a lot more EFIS.
Yeah.
So that...
I've stayed at them, and they're very nice. Very nice hotels.
They're very, it's an up-and-coming brand, you're seeing it pop up a lot.
And the service was good, too.
Yep, they're an extended stay brand, so it's intended to, and they have kitchenettes in there, larger rooms. So we're certainly excited about the project, and that kinda covers those two questions. I don't know if you guys have, on landscaping, this gets brought up a lot more when, say, we used to do residential, mainly a commercial development company now, but residential, oftentimes buffers got brought up in terms of putting this in. This is not a lie, this is true, when you put in larger plants, they have a much higher rate of dying. So we've done this before in requirements from, to put those in, and while you can go, and it's not a cost issue, going full-brick, to be honest with where costs are in construction right now, would be a dead issue if we were to be required to do that because of the cost of that building would put it out of the realm of us being able to do the project. The landscaping issue is not a cost issue, so it's one that I would want, definitely not an expert, I just know we've had to do this in the past, and we had like 50% of them die. It comes down to when you're actually doing the project, and what time of year it is, and this is not my area of expertise, so it's not a cost issue, it's more of an issue of, are these things gonna live? Because you don't wanna put in half of them that are big, and then half of them end up dying, and it kinda takes one step forward and two steps backwards. So, we'd wanna probably get some more experts in there to help us understand whether or not that is achievable, and whether or not it's actually gonna work, down to what type plants are going in, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not an expert with that. So, just something I was thinking about, because this is something that's been brought up, that we've had to do in the past more on the residential side, and it wasn't exactly successful.
What about all the trees? Are you gonna keep any? How are you gonna...
Yeah, in terms of on the actual site, most of them, with what you see, will come down. Obviously, when we're, you know, putting in parking lots and detention and the other requirements, to actually get the development off the ground, it's hard to work around trees that are there, given the main area of the site plan. You know, you can see we've already designed, you can't see my finger, but we've already designed, you know, more of a replacement buffer, keeping what we can where we're not coming in and putting pavement, or curb, or sidewalk, or underground utilities.
Okay, anybody have any other questions?
Well, where does that leave us with the landscaping? Are we gonna make that ask, or are we gonna just go with...
I accept his response, because I don't know. I mean, I don't...
I've done a substantial amount with stonemower and other things, and he is correct, because even if I had plenty of money, I would not spend it on very large plants, because they, with the drought tolerance, that kind of thing, even trying to keep stuff watered is very difficult. And I think part of what, I understand what you're concerned, but I think if I remember correctly, the practical type effect at Starbucks, part of it's a vine plant, and once again, you don't ever start with a huge plant. It has, and that's unfortunately, we want it to look like they showed us, but I think that in reality, what he's telling us is correct.
Well, I mean, I would agree. I mean, I think everybody knows that if you plant a vine, it's, you know, it's gonna take years to go. I'm talking about the one-gallon plants. I mean, I'm no expert, but I've taken out a lot of plants and replanted, and, you know, what you do see is in residential, is they put in multiple rows of plants in front of the house, and they end up just all growing together. So my approach is, I put in fewer plants, but I put in impact plants. I mean, I don't know if I'm lucky, but my survival rate's been pretty high. I just, I mean, I guess there's something to that, again, I don't know, but I mean, the survival rate of a one or two gallon versus a five or six gallon, I mean, it can't be off the charts. They both need sun and water.
Yeah, and I don't, honestly, I don't know what, I mean, I haven't gone and researched this, or just kinda speaking from experience, I know, for example, we used to put in Leyland cypresses as berms, and you don't put in Leyland cypresses anymore because those things die. I mean, so we've moved to hollies, which are fast-growing, and this is the extent of my specific knowledge, but you put in hollies, because they're faster-growing, blind, you know, that serves the same effect as what Leyland cypresses usually do, where they can live, as opposed to having one dead, one alive, another alive, then another dead, they just, they take a little bit longer, but they have, in terms of the type and the size, again, it's not so much a cost issue, being perfectly honest on my end, yes, it might cost a little bit more, but it's not something that's gonna kill the project or anything, it's just, I think we would wanna assess that, and we certainly would be willing to get a more specific answer on the landscape plan, talking with our landscape architect about that issue.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'll cede the point, but I think maybe we need to look into it, because like, everyone's saying they're no expert, maybe we need to talk to an expert and see if it's something that we can do to make a requirement to come in with a little bit more mature plan. And I'll leave it at that.
So, we can handle this a couple ways. I first want to set the record straight on the front parking approval. As we go through this multi-level approval process, there's different areas of code that we are seeking approval for. Mentioned the height of four stories, not relief, but a different type of approval. Same with the front parking. It's built into our ordinance where, it's not technically relief that they're seeking, but it's built in where the applicant can pursue front yard parking with a conditional zoning or conditional use permit. So I just wanted to ease your mind there, that we have that built in for very specific situations on a case-by-case basis for council consideration. Second, staff recommends that we have the applicant use the landscape architect to come up with a landscaping plan that meets more than the minimum standard. So maybe, if the minimum is 18 inches, we can get the next industry-standard, you know, healthy product. So how about that, that we come up with an additional conditional approval, that the landscape plan is...
I mean, that's fine, if that's, you know, I mean, I'm just making a point, for me personally, you know, my perception, now if council wants to do that collectively, that's an issue for council, I mean, I was just raising the point.
I might mention, I don't have any problem with this, and maybe Shelley, as the planning department, how do y'all feel about this landscaping thing? Do you see that as a big issue? I don't see that as a big issue personally.
No, what happens is, if this is approved, then we get into the details of engineering plans, and hire a landscape architect, we can take comments out of the minutes, and work with that landscape architect to draw, to do drawings, to make sure that we get the buffer that everybody's hoping to envision. So, that's something that can be worked out at staff level.
So you don't really... So you don't really, but listen, Shelley, you really don't see a problem with this as we move forward?
No.
It would be a shame to hold up a project such as this over two feet of bushes.
I think it was just adding a condition, not-
I don't think we were trying to kill the project, I was just raising a point, Ron.
I mean, I think we need to move forward.
I agree.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve it with-
We come out of public hearing.
Got a motion to come out of public hearing?
I'll motion.
Is anyone else signed?
I am, yes, I am. So to speak.
Nobody's, nobody's signed up to speak, no.
Motion to come out of public hearing.
I second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, a public hearing.
I'll make the motion to approve it with the condition that they do the landscaping at the next step up above our minimum standard.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
That's rather vague. I don't know, can, can, Shelley, what, are you comfortable with that as the planning department or what's?
I would say yes, we could, we could accept that as long as the applicant accepts that if we're minimum 18 inches. Of course, we'd want the input from the landscape architect that the type of buffer shrub and will be, will thrive at that initial planning height. So as long as you're comfortable.
You good with that?
I think so. It's a little out of, it's a little out of my area. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to be just held to a standard of, that doesn't make sense at the end of the day. This is, but fine to assess it. I'm a little nervous about being held to it as a condition. If there's a way for us to commit to assessing that and then providing a report, again, this is not a major financial issue that I know of, but it's something that I want to assess before fully getting it.
Good with that, Shelley?
I think we should not make that condition or this is on us, we're going to have to reevaluate the whole setup as far as if we want 24-inch plants, if we want, but some plants that you buy, even if you buy the five gallon kind, are not going to be that height. So I think we're being too restricted here. I think we're going to have to fix it. I'm not saying that either, but I don't think that we should do that on the backs of what this project is.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, this is part of taking everything down, which some people don't think is ideal, and then replanning it, it does take time. Look, it's in our best interest for the landscaping to look good out here. It's not in our best interest. We're a long-term holder, we're going to hold this property for a long, long time. It's not something that, it's a big financial project, it's a good financial project for the city, you know, in terms of tax base. So this is not something that we, we want it to look good and we're committed to making it look good. I, to be honest with you, just not familiar with the specific requirements. And then if it's, if it's put on there and we get in there and find out that, that that just flat out doesn't make sense because of the landscape architect says it doesn't make sense, that would set us back from a timing standpoint. So certainly committed to the landscape plan looking very good as, because it's in our best interest as well for the-
All right, Parks, just to go ahead and expedite this thing and put it to bed, can I make an alternate motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would motion that we go ahead and approve as presented. And I would ask Planning and Zoning to look into the viability of increasing our requirements. Is that an acceptable alternate motion?
I don't, I don't know if you want to put that in the same motion, though, I wouldn't think.
Okay.
Excuse me, do you mean as far as the ordinance as a whole? Because that is part of-
Yeah, I was-
... proposal for the treaty ordinance and landscaping update that we were-
Okay, I didn't know, that's a component of that?
That's part of it. So we're already planning to look at that section of the-
Okay. Well, then I'll offer an amendment to my amended motion, that we just go ahead and approve as presented.
Yep.
Got a second?
I second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. I hope that looks good. I hope I don't have to spend the night my wife throws me out of Hammond.
Consistency state.
Thank you.
That's Doug's.
Consistency state, what's that?
That's your fourth day.
Geez, man.
His computer's down.
You make it hard.
It's up on the screen.
So I make a motion that this project meets both goal one and two for our land use development plan.
I second. Got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Proceed. Next item is on a public hearing on a request to zone 1.62 acres at 6213 Wilkinson Boulevard. Do I have a motion to go into public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion, I've got one person signed up to speak as well, so, okay. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we're in public hearing.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council again. Tonight we have zoning amendment 2019-01, which is a request to establish another conditional zoning district on an already developed property at 6213 Wilkinson Boulevard. You may know this as the Dellinger property. It's on the west side of our jurisdiction. The request is to keep the highway commercial zoning district, which currently has a highway corridor overlay applied to it. The request is to operate an auto service business on this existing 1.62 acres of land, and they are seeking really for certain provisions of the Land Development Code. As I mentioned, the subject property is located in a star here. It's located just west of the mini storage facilities on the north side of Wilkinson Boulevard, right at the edge of our city limits. The former Dellinger operation was there since the mid-eighties and has remained in place till about last year. As I mentioned, the property is known highway commercial, highway corridor overlay. The properties to the rear are San General Residential, to the east is Highway Commercial, south Highway Commercial, as well with the mini storage and some other auto service businesses. And to the west are two vacant properties. The applicant is David Stoffel for Dent Wizard. So the goal is to reestablish a viable use at this existing location. As it has been operating on 1.62 acres, the proposed use is currently required to have two acres per the highway corridor overlay. Also, the property has 150 feet of road frontage, where the overlay requires 200, require 200 feet. That's about, there's a breakdown in your staff report, but about 80% of the required areas there. The other area that the applicant is requesting relief is in the width of the buffer area that's required between all rural residential and general residential properties and the use of this type. This is another situation where the width is being reduced, but the actual opaque buffer will be enhanced with landscape plantings and a solid, a solid wood fence. What's currently there is about eight feet of chain-linked fence with barbed wire. So this is an improvement to how the property is, has previously been operating between the residential uses. And through the course of this approval process, the applicant has to have a neighborhood meeting, which was held, and the neighbors have been involved. We received a request regarding a specific tree on this property, and we've just added a condition that's new from your staff report. The applicant has agreed where our goal is to protect and preserve the existing trees. If there is a problematic tree, we will require an arborist inspect and report on the health of any trees to be removed. So also in your staff report is a little breakdown, I will say that we've had a technical review committee meeting. All of our staff has looked at this, including stormwater, and there are drainage easements and drainage, drainage ways along the edges of this property. So as we move forward, if approved, the applicant will work with staff and engineering and stormwater to create this solid opaque buffer with supplemental plantings, not only on the residential side, but on the interior side of the property to help mitigate any noise that could come. And so what you have proposed would be enhanced by landscape plantings on both sides of the fence. So what I'm concluding is that the details have yet to be finalized, but there will be solid opaque buffer along all the areas where it's required between this use and the residential adjoining properties. So this area is located in our economic corridor. It is the area for higher intensity and higher density uses, close to major thoroughfares. And we certainly want to help revigorate a site that is currently vacant and is already developed with the constraints that it has. As we mentioned before, as we go through the give and take process, we recognize that a reduction in the width should mean some additional considerations from the applicant, in this case in the form of increased buffering. So the planning and zoning board did hear this request and recommended approval. They found that it was a reasonable request in the public interest, promotes the comprehensive land use plan goals by fostering an economy with diversified tax base, balance the residential and commercial uses, and would feel particularly in this case, we're helping protect the residential properties even more than they have been for the past 27 years, next to a commercial use. And also goal number six, we will be adding another segment of our Wilkinson Boulevard multi-use path with landscape plantings. And piece by piece, as that corridor grows, we look to the applicants to build their parts and eventually we'll have a connected network.
That's a 10-foot sidewalk?
Yes, with plantings on both sides. So that area will be improved as well in the front. Again, those same screening requirements will be included as well.
Thank you.
So as I mentioned, planning and zoning board recommends approval. We ask council to-
Planning and zoning approved at seven and nothing?
Yes, eight. No, seven, yes.
But I have one person signed up to speak. If council have any questions, by the way, from Melissa? I have one person signed up to speak, and that's Brooks Whitehead.
Good evening, Council. I'm Brooks Whitehead with Whitehead Industrial Properties. My colleague is Daniel Marche, who has been representing Dent Wizard to find a location near the Charlotte Airport, as close as they can. And when we first toured the building, it kind of passed the eyeball test for a lot of different factors. And one was, we kind of thought zoning would probably be okay because it was a heavy machine shop. Seemed like a very industrial use. And then we found out there were some requirements kind of related to that highway commercial, I guess Wilkinson Boulevard overlay. And part of that was the acreage and then the buffer. And so we've been working with Melissa and Shelley to try and work this out and also provide an upgrade to the residents that are behind this building. And so right now, there's just a chain-linked fence, you can see straight through it, there's not any landscaping at all. And we found out during the neighborhood meeting that it was a pretty intensive industrial use. I do a lot of industrial real estate and some of the equipment they had in there is some of the largest that I've seen. So it was a pretty heavy operation, pretty loud one. We heard that there was some things kind of at all different hours of unloading and loading and filling up different tanks onsite, things like that. And so once we explained the use to the neighbors, they seemed to appreciate the new screening that would come with it and then also the use. And so I'll give you a rundown of the use because it's not something that you can usually just find in the zoning manual because it's hard to write for everything. And so this use is not equivalent to a body shop. You, if there's a wrecked car, it will not be coming to this shop. And it's only wholesale use. And so the use is that Dent Wizard will take vehicles from a rental car company located at Charlotte Douglas Airport. And as those cars have dent scratches, dings on them, kind of like you'd get at a grocery store or something, they'll bring the cars and they drive them from the airport to the location, have them sit in the parking lot until they're ready to bring them in. And then they do the light work on them. Again, if you have a wreck, kind of a fender bender thing, it's not coming to the shop. They won't have the equipment to do that. So it's really more cosmetic work.
Cosmetic, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be two paint booths in the building and those are, you know, nowadays those are all kind of self-contained and regulated within themselves. So we think it'll be very clean use. It'll be a nine to five, Monday through Friday, operation. So it should be relatively quiet and especially more quiet than what the current zoning, I guess, kind of allow. So that's kind of my summary. If you guys have any questions, just let me know.
Any questions?
No.
How many people do you think will work there?
We've estimated about 15 to 20.
With no further questions, does anybody have a motion to come out of public hearing?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Moves us on to considering the ordinance to approve the zoning map amendment. Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve.
Got a motion we approve, got a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Our motion carries it.
And then I make a motion that means the statement of consistency.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
That it promotes goal number two, which is fostering an economy with diversified tax base and balancing the residential and commercial uses, and promotes goal number six, which is infrastructure, by building a high-quality efficient infrastructure, gaining another streetscape improvement on Wilkinson Boulevard.
Well, I'll second.
I'll second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, very good. Move on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, really.
All right, next item on the agenda is consider the approval of the budget amendment number one. Michelle?
I'm going to present the budget amendment.
Basically, this first amendment was mainly just for doing capital projects that we evaluated, Davis Park, tennis park, tennis courts, the resurfacing of the crosswalks, and the police radios. So we're increasing that. And then we decreased our debt service because we paid out the police department. So that came down. And then we increased the revenue to offset the police radios. And the only other thing was the CDBG. When we first adopted that ordinance, we just adopted the CDBG funds. And so actually, we had some city funds that were going into the project. We had City of Gastonia, some National Milles, and then Tech Works. So we didn't put that in the original ordinance, so that's why we're adding that in so it matches up the first things we received.
Would the, would the crosswalk go into that if it's on the statement?
That was, that came out of our general fund capital.
Because then we're just going to do the-
They stated it was just on a basic crosswalk.
It's like, we did the upgrade, did make it look nice.
I was, that's not what I was thinking. I was thinking of something else. All right.
I make a motion we approve the budget amendment.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Very good. Motion carries it. Next, we have the reports from the different committees that we have. Adrian?
Yes, sir. So the next section are minutes from the meetings of the various, either city council committees or our advisory committees. There's, this is just your information, no action is needed. But you have the minutes from the January meetings from the Belmont Tourism Development Authority, the Environmental Sustainability Report, the Main Street Advisory Board, and Downtown Belmont Development Association, the Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Board, the Planning and Zoning Board, the Public Safety Committee of the City Council, and the Transportation Committee, the new Transportation Committee of the City Council. So all of those are for your information only, no action is needed on those. If you have any questions about any of those meetings, I'd be happy to try to answer them or defer to staff who serves on those boards.
Thank you, Adrian.
Then the last item under the reports is the city manager's report. And I wanted to report out on a couple items that we've been talking about for several months, in some cases longer, just to update everyone. The, the staff for the Metropolitan Transit Commissioner CAT's staff did make a recommendation to their board in January to extend the Silver Line Light Rail into Belmont. Their January 23rd meeting- 23rd meeting. The Metropolitan Transit Commission will meet again on, I believe it's Wednesday, it's February the 27th, to actually vote on the recommendation. And that meeting is at 5:30 PM at the Charlotte Mecklenburg Government Center, open to the public. It would be great if some of you could attend that meeting and speak in favor of that light rail extension into Belmont.
Second with that in his favor.
It's on page 145 of your agenda packets. It's on February the 27th at 5:30 PM.
I'm going, Adrian.
And so we're trying to get a group from Gaston County to speak in favor.
I'll have to do that, too.
I am happy to report that this, the extension of this project into Gaston County was much better received than we had last summer, the summer before at the Catawba Crossing discussion.
I remember that.
So we look forward to continue working with CATS and the MTC on this project.
Will he need to speak, Adrian, or just be there?
Either one.
Okay.
Certainly being there is helpful. They do have public comment, so it would be nice to have somebody to speak.
I think if we go, we should talk about, and so we don't, or are redundant if we're going to space.
Yes, I would agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Can you send out a reminder on that when the date gets closer?
Certainly, certainly. Next, as we mentioned at the retreat, NCDOT is moving forward with their plans to replace the Sloane Ferry Bridge, which is the Wilkinson Boulevard Bridge over the Catawba River, in about the next two years, fiscal year 2021. We've been working closely with NCDOT and our partners at the MPO in Gaston County, Mecklenburg County, City of Charlotte, and CATS. The plan is to replace the bridge with a six-lane bridge with multi-use path on both sides, on the north side and the south side, and then ultimately to have a separate bridge to serve light rail. But the first steps are to get the bridge itself replaced. And as we talked about at the Transportation Committee meeting, this was going to, this was originally scheduled to occur at the same time that the 85 widening project was going to get started, which obviously would have been just a nightmare to have work on both 74 and 85. Our section of 85 has now been pushed back for two years. So the goal of NCDOT is to complete the Wilkinson Bridge replacement prior to the 85 construction starting.
Adrian, a question. I know they don't have the design plans already, but do you see that impacting our park out there?
They, we don't know how much additional right-of-way they're going to need. It shouldn't impact the park itself. It may impact some of the access to the parking lot there at the old Dale's Boat Landing. It's now the Kevin Lofton Riverfront Park Boat Landing. So that, those impacts could be...
I just wonder if they'll go to the north over to the south of it, if you don't know.
The, well, right now, the tentative plan is to build the northern half of the new bridge on the north side of the existing bridge for three lanes of traffic. And then when that section's finished, demolish the, then shift traffic, then demolish the existing bridge, and then build the southern half of that bridge adjacent to the...
So it really shouldn't impact us very much, then, should it?
It, it looks like the new bridge will swing north of the current bridge.
Yeah.
But again, the details of how it, the approaches on Wilkinson between Catawba Street and the shoreline, we don't know that yet.
Thank you.
There is an opportunity to make this a signature bridge, and so we will be working with those partners that I mentioned on some upgrades to the design elements because we only get a chance with this bridge about every 90 years.
Can we work with Mecklenburg County because it's the gateway to Mecklenburg County, too?
Yes, and, and their jurisdiction starts halfway across the river.
So we'll do half the way, and they can do the other half.
Right.
Yeah.
So we just need to get Belmont and Gaston County and Mecklenburg County to agree on everything.
Yeah.
And then come up with a way to pay for it. But we are working on that, and DOT is trying to get this done quickly, so we'll be coming back to you with some design options and prices this spring.
That would be a big, big help.
Yes. There are a couple committees that need to meet in February if possible. As we talked about at the retreat, we had a public, a request for the Public Safety Committee to meet to talk about the downtown police officer position. The members of the Public Safety Committee are Councilman Folk, Councilman Gadd, and Mayor Pro Tem Stowe. So if you can look at your calendars and coordinate with Jamie on a time that works for all of you, we'll get that meeting scheduled. Also, and this is not in the materials, but Chuck reminded me, we've had a request from the River Ridge Condominium Neighborhood on the Catawba River for a Water and Sewer Committee meeting, and the members of the Water and Sewer Committee are Mayor Martin, Councilman Gadd, and Councilman Folk. They have a private lift station that they want to dedicate to the city, which obviously requires them to upgrade that to city standards. So that's a big expense, and they just want some surety that if they do upgrade to the city standards, that we will in fact take it over for ownership and maintenance because it is a, it's an expensive endeavor for them. So they just want to meet and talk through, they've been working with staff so far, but they'd like to have a little bit of assurance that if they meet all of our policies and requirements, that we will take that over. So again, that's Mayor Martin, Councilman Folk, and Councilman Gadd. So we'll need to meet, and we can...
If we can piggyback the same meeting with the other one, that'd be good.
Excuse me. We had the first Santa Hustle back in December. It was a half marathon and 5K event that was in Belmont and Cranmerton. We had approximately 1,200 participants in that. A little over half were local from Gaston County. The rest were from outside our area, and a lot of those were from, from at least 50 miles away. So there was a visitor impact, and I can get you some information from Gaston County Travel and Tourism on that. They were very impressed with, with our community and would like to come back, and they, they've picked the date of December the 14th of 2019. That's, I think, a week or two earlier than what they did in December this year. This year was the Saturday before Christmas, so this will be earlier. And so before we, we get back with them, I just wanted to see if it was okay with you if we continue those conversations. Obviously, we'll have to come back to you for street closings. But we, we got feedback. Of course, anytime we have an event in town, it inconveniences people, and we just have to wait. Does the benefit of having events in town outweigh the inconvenience for some time allowance?
Adrian, can I ask you a question about that?
Of course.
Have we ever looked at what the street closings and when we use the park for nonprofits and other people want to use our parks, and we, we offer in-kind services? I mean, I know there's an impact to the budgets, budget, particularly streets, how much that affects our budget because those things we haven't scheduled or budgeted for. But it seems like we're getting more and more requests for races, more use of the park with in-kind services, and I mean, that's going to impact public works, police, et cetera. I mean, have we ever taken a look at the past years and maybe done a spreadsheet on how it's incrementally gone up and what we're looking at?
I don't know that we've got historic data, but I did ask Cassidy Lackey, who is our Parks and Recreation Events Coordinator, to keep track of the cost of the in-kind support, both on the staff side, but also the equipment, the barricades and things like that that we put out. So she's been tracking that this past year. We can certainly get you a report on that.
I'd just be curious to see how much that is because it seems, we're getting these requests more and more. I'm sure there is some impact, I just don't know how much.
Yes.
Are they all in, they're not all in-kind services, are they?
No.
Santa Hustle.
The Santa Hustle, we provided a little bit of our, I shouldn't say, we provided some of our equipment, primarily the promoters brought in their own equipment. They brought in an 18-wheeler full of barricades and cones, and their staff, and then they had volunteers. So this was a big event. They estimated, again, we had about 1,200 people participate in it this, in 2018, they estimate probably 2,000 people would do it next year. So this, this does have the potential to become a major draw in Christmas time, tying in with everything else that goes on, it's going on around Christmas. But before we sign off on saying we're willing to work with you to make it a safe event, we just wanted to get your blessing to have that, or we could just tell them, no, it's just too inconvenient.
I think we should move forward. I think it's an asset to the community. We have a lot of people in town, an asset of parks and wrecks.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
Also food.
And we will proceed with that. And then we will, later in the year, we'll bring you back the ordinance to close those Just a couple sort of issues that are sort of out there. There's, and I'm glad to hear that we've got one vacant property on Wilkinson that's going to be redeveloped, but there are a lot of other vacant properties or dilapidated properties on Wilkinson Boulevard and other areas of town, but that are non-residential. And so our basically minimum housing ordinance doesn't address those concerns, even though if, if they were residential, you know, they would not meet the standards. And so they sort of fall outside of what our ordinances regulate in terms of appearance and safety as far as Belmont. So we defer to Gaston County building inspections, particularly the automated car feeder property on the south side of Wilkinson that caught fire several years ago. It is deemed safe and secure by the county, so there's no real code enforcement that we can do if the county's, it meets the county's requirements. So I've asked Chris Ray, our code enforcement officer, to look into, you know, what can we do that gives us the authority to go and apply what would essentially be a minimum housing code to non-residential structures. And so he has provided with a section from the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code, which we're authorized by General Statutes to adopt and use. Before we really get into a lot of the details of that, I want to see if that's something that you would like for us to pursue.
Yes.
And maybe we can have a workshop. We were talking about having a workshop already and maybe in March, bringing this up as a workshop topic to learn more about it so that we can start cleaning up the boulevards and other non-residential areas. Thank you. Also, we are, we are working to upgrade the cooperative dumpsters on Glenway Street in the parking lot. The doors we have are kind of thin and get hit and warped, so we're going to be replacing those with some more substantive doors, using a composite Trex material that you see a lot of times in decking and railing. This is an area that we've talked about having security cameras. This is priority one for security cameras in the new budget year. What we're, what we believe is happening is certainly there are some participating businesses that are not following the rules. Certainly, sometimes Waste Pro is not on schedule with its collection, but also we're seeing public dumping, and we have signs posted, no public dumping.
And they dump it.
Sometimes people that don't follow the rules also don't follow what the sign says. So that's another reason why we want to have, you know, sort of increase patrol with the police, but also want to have cameras so that we can catch people in better lighting there as well. This is, you know, it's worked out well, and when everybody participates and everybody follows the rules, it's a really nice thing and certainly better than what it was on the other side of Glenway Street, but we are working on that. Certainly want to get a handle on that before summer starts and the heat makes everything smell bad. And then just to follow up on Vince Hill's proposal earlier in the evening, for the elements of empowerment, this is something that we have partnered with Elements of Empowerment. We do more of a use agreement. We don't just give money to nonprofits. We have a use agreement. If it's because this is the council, I'll work with Vince and turn this into a use agreement in exchange for the money. They will provide certain services for Juneteenth events, like we've done the last couple of years, and have that for your March agenda. That is all that I have.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Adrian. Any other business? We'll start with Ryan.
Yeah, I just had some questions about the parks, however, David, maybe. I went to Edgant yesterday, and both the gates were locked to get in to the little playground area.
The door, they were locked?
Yeah, and then I noticed, like, there's little monkey bars there. You can tell him he has little kids. There's a little monkey bar there that looked like it's missing.
We have parks, it's broke, so we have parks on board. It should be moved in the next couple of days.
Okay, and so we went down in the Riverfront Park, and I noticed the bridge down there was blocked off, too. What's going on with that? Do you know, like, on the...
Same issue.
Is this broken, or?
It's broken.
Okay.
It's been repaired also.
Okay. Because I knew one of the pitches on increasing our revenue last year was that we were going to maintain our parks. I just want to make sure that's not being left aside. There's a lot of people out yesterday, it's nice. And then if we're going to do security cameras for garbage cans, maybe we should look at doing security cameras for other things like our parks. So I don't know how that works, but...
So, so where we left it, we had a workshop back in October where David presented a proposal for security cameras. That's not a budget item, and the council asked us to come up with a priority list and a budget workshop. And so, yeah, so the parks, Stowe Park, the Lofton River Park, the Boat Landing, the downtown parking lots, and the dumpsters here were top on our list. So we will be presenting that to you as part of the budget workshop.
Okay. It's all ready? No, I'll pass. Go ahead.
I just want to say congratulations to Adrian on becoming certified by the ICMA, International City/County Management Association.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Well, you took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to say the same thing. It's okay.
You can, you can say congratulations to Nick and Priyanka Jonas.
I was at the reception with Adrian. That was a great, that was a great reception.
That was a fun event.
That was really a lot of fun, a lot of fun. Fried chicken was good, too.
Just a couple comments. The Charlotte Civic Orchestra will be at Belmont Abbey at 3 o'clock on Sunday. We have not had a full orchestra in Belmont since 2006, when they performed at the Presbyterian Church. So if you can, please attend because we want to have a lot of people there, and it's free. That's 3 o'clock on Sunday.
Is that going to have the room?
Yes. And the bridge at Wilkinson Boulevard, I was going to Charlotte yesterday, we had three people walking across from Charlotte Mecklenburg, and there was no space. It was very scary, so I'm real excited that we're looking at that sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Ewing Drive, thank you, David, for making sure that they got the pothole taken care of. I think at some point, we're going to need to look at sidewalk there with the community, the village, and the school, and people with bikes and stuff. I know it's a state-maintained road, I don't know the process, but we, on a safety standpoint, probably need to look at what needs to happen with regard to the sidewalk. And the last, the Colwell Farm Road, I know we were looking at monitoring that since it's private, and I want to make sure we continue to do that so it stays in a decent condition. That's it. Thank you.
What was that one?
Colwell Farm, in front of Lowe's and Walmart. That's not city, but we need to, we need to stay after them because they're not taken care of a lot of times to keep it cleaned up. Thank you.
Ronaldo.
No, I don't.
All right. Very good. With no further ado, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please adjourn. Can you, can we arrange that, that meeting that we got coming up in February?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Why we're right here?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I'll be, is that all right with you, too?
Yep.
You can tell there's news morning on tonight.
See, I'll be going.
Where are you going?
Yeah.
Oh, when are you leaving?
This one?
Oh. You know, man, we want to...